We've got a little bit to go through here, plus update on where we're at with the search for Josephine's, and I use quotes, replacement because we know she's irreplaceable.
A different person to take the position, how about that?
Yeah, thank you.
Just a different person.
I was just gonna say successful.
Take the role, and Josephine, what was the other thing you said?
She's the first successful.
The other thing was the...
I told you, we had two things. One, we wanted to make sure we get an update on where we're at with hers.
We have that email, right?
Pardon me?
That email that we received.
About, oh, yeah, we can talk about that too, about the class.
I didn't think that was your other one, no, the BZA thing.
Yeah, but I can't remember. Anyhow, we'll just start with the real agenda. The first one is the compensation of the law department. I'll take that one, and would you like to explain it?
Sure. So, the ordinance effectuates a reallocation of funds. Twenty thousand that currently goes to the Assistant Law Director will be allocated to the law director salary, and five thousand will be allocated from the Assistant Law Director to support services. Personnel is not changing. You know, people have asked us, Tom retiring or something. Tom is not retiring. He's still fully onboard and operating as normal. The net result will actually be a slight decrease in expenditures where the city, because of that five thousand going to support services, is not going to be pensionable any longer.
Excuse me. Could we see it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Is this number three, Jan? Pardon me, is this number three?
Josephine?
Oh, yeah. I mean, really, from last week. Not a big number.
We just want to be sure.
No, we have to test.
We didn't have a number on the agenda, and they always give us a number.
I know, only you had one two last night.
Okay, questions?
Mr. Mark explained it pretty good.
If there are no questions, I would say one, two, three, especially since it's minus. And we get to keep the same personnel.
That was my only question.
Although, yeah, maybe we should talk about that without Mark in the room.
Whatever your pleasure is.
I was gonna say that.
I've known Mark since he was in high school, so, went to school with my kids. Okay, the next, one, two, three, four, are reappointments for the Planning and Zoning They have been serving already, correct, Mayor?
Correct.
And so, this is just, and how long are their terms?
I believe those are four years, are they not?
Yeah, they run with the mayor's term concurrent, it's four years there.
Okay. You serve with all of these. Do you have any comments?
Nope.
Positive, negative, explanation?
It's all yours, Mr. Finley.
Got any dirt on these guys?
As long as I have one guy.
If not, it's basically, in my mind, it's always paperwork that we have to do, and unless someone has an issue with any of them, we normally go one, two, three, like your name would have been on here if you hadn't moved to this seat. And since this is number four, five, six, and seven, Mr. Finley, since you were a member of this commission, could you take all four?
Sure.
And you don't have to waive the 48-hour rule into the agenda?
No, she's saving that for me.
I'm saving that, love you.
We do, assuming one, two, three, and nine as well?
Yep. Unless somebody objects, I went to, not their last meeting, but the meeting before, a good group of people, I've known Mr. Westfrogs forever, had not met, I knew Mr. Palado too, but not the others, and we really had a good discussion. It really was interactive and respective, but it wasn't all yes, which is, to my mind, one of the most important things, to have different viewpoints, to see what you can compromise on, if anything. Okay, moving right along, the mayor one. The next one up is, Mayor, if you want to explain this to everyone about what's been happening?
Sure. So, every day I would drive in, I would come to the parking lot and see a bunch of dilapidated vehicles that we own. I walked outside with our service director and our service supervisor, and I said, "Guys, what do we have all these vehicles?" A lot of them just sit there, some of them had rotted frames, some of them are just vehicles that we got by way of the police, you know, the DBs were using some of them, sometimes not, but more often than not, they sat with a pile of snow on top of them, they weren't being used. Really, some of them I looked at, feel are safe to drive, but we got to the point where they're operational, and I'd like to dispose of them, and my thought was, what I'm intending to do is get rid of, I think, four now?
Three.
Three, and then we may trade some in, and I want to buy one vehicle, brand new, off of a state bid, that's an administrative vehicle, so we don't have six vehicles that are under insurance, being repaired constantly. We have one vehicle that's needed, we all share that vehicle, and that's it. So, we don't have a parking lot that looks like a junkyard essentially.
So, does this list change then?
We were gonna, I think we're gonna trade some of those vehicles that are higher value for trade-in.
The Toyota 4Runner and the Kia are both going to be traded, so you should have a new piece of legislation in front of you that authorizes the trade for those two vehicles, and then you should have the updated Exhibit A for that as well.
And it added the number six, because we originally had five. So, you're right, it did change.
And so, Mr. Garvis, Mr. Finley, so you're aware, there is a provision in the ordinance, and we've done this consistently, if the items don't sell at auction, then the city's otherwise authorized to dispose of them, whether it's through scrap or whatever the case may be, because there's basically no value, and you're not going to have any auctions. I saw that somewhere in here.
If you look at the list, and these are the values I think we pulled from Kelly's book, they're really nothing fancy or great that we want to hang out to. One has the order of cat here.
And the purchase of it via the auction is not held to other entities in government, it can be a person. Because I have to tell Greg about the 2006 Toyota 4Runner, that's his favorite truck.
Do we hold the auction here, or give it to some company?
No, it's fast track. Section four there.
He's a local guy that we tied up, our last disposal of vehicles, and it worked very well, because he was more engaged, he came down, he handled everything, it took a lot of the work out of our hands, where we used to have to take pictures and listings and do all this stuff, and he was very fair with the fees he charged us, so we feel it's a better way to move forward.
Do you know what vehicle you're gonna purchase?
We were looking at a Dodge Durango, a stripped-down Dodge Durango, because they're on state fit. Which one did you go through for that?
It's a 2020 Dodge Durango, price would be 26,422, plus smaller, you know, extended warranty, stuff like that, so, pretty good deal.
Are we simultaneously voting on that in this ordinance, or would that be a separate thing?
It's under our $50,000 limit, so we don't have to, as long as, you know, it fits in the cap requirement, it does.
Any other questions? Mark, and that's right, I believe that's number eight. We do this periodically, so it's nothing new. You may not have noticed it before, but...
I'm a frequent visitor of GovDeals.com or something, they do the same thing.
Just got a call from them today.
So, have you bought anything online from us?
No, almost, I almost bought something from the Ruck Center Auction, because didn't we list all that on GovDeals?
Yeah.
I considered getting something then, but I never...
Did you move it yourself?
Yeah, that was the challenge.
On a certain day, at a certain time.
So, if there's no disagreement, I would recommend we do one, two, three on this. Mr. Ventura?
For bookkeeping purposes, and since Vinnie got it, it'd probably be good just to make a motion to amend, to be consistent with the version distributed tonight.
That's awesome.
Just to reflect, it's not the version that went out on...
He was waiting to see who got it.
I did not know that either once.
I told you it was gonna happen.
I saw that coming. I did not know that, but...
I saw something coming, I just didn't know where and when.
Okay. So, if you need, anytime that Mark may say we need to do both, he'll write it out for you too, so you're not sitting up there, because we're all like, "What was that you said?", and he'll hand us a piece of paper, so we do it in the legal fashion. Okay. Number nine, something that's been dear to my heart, I'm gonna take this one, only because I'm just one of the pushers for it. You or Mr. G?
Well, I'll kick it off, and I'll hand it to Mr. Gelati, but essentially, this is our, going out to bids for our road program. Obviously, over the past four years, we've got a comprehensive plan for what we're doing moving forward, in terms of the dollars we have and what we can pave. And sitting down with Mr. Gelati, this is the list of roads with what we have going on, and he'll go more in depth with why we chose some of these, but we feel this is the best laid path for us to pave roads in 2020 and live within our budget.
Sure, yeah, thanks, Mayor. The legislation before you, very similar to the legislation that we've had in previous years for the annual road program. Exhibit A, which I'm sure you've seen, lists the roads that are going to be paved, generally following our pavement condition ratings report. Also, you might note, this portion of South Bedford is on the list. That's the zone near 82, it's in bad shape, heavy traffic, especially during school, let-out time, and service spends a lot of time patching that, so it's a worthwhile road for us to pave at this time. And as the mayor said, this is simply the legislation to authorize us to go out for bids.
And just to add to that, in the past, when we did that big group reunion roads, when we started all this, we were behind the eight ball. Going out to bid now makes us more competitive in the market, which gets us better prices, so this is something that I'm definitely asking to get this done tonight, because it gives us the opportunity to have more people bid on it, which drives the cost down.
Yeah, the sooner we can go out to bid, the sooner we can have a bid, we can sign a contract, the sooner we can get a contractor paving roads.
Joe, can you explain for the Broadmore, Broadlodge, Ledgeview, Navaho, North China, Bay, and South Bedford?
Yeah.
It's not simply patching?
Oh, no. Yeah, that's a complete paving of the road, yes.
Right. As well as the others, do you have this updated, because I'm not sure our new representatives have, which was the entire city? There was a time that we had approved, under the previous mayor, we went out and had everyone inspected, everyone was graded based on its status, and how it looked, how it felt, the holes in it, and so, we've been trying to go from the top-down of the worst, and move them from, what was the worst, fair or poor?
Very poor.
Very poor. And so, trying to move them off of the poor until we don't need to touch them hopefully 10 to 20 years is the goal. So, if we could have this updated and get it all to council?
Yeah, we have that, we can...
They updated it, didn't you update it like in October?
Yeah, we had our...
This is September.
The presentation we have, but I'll...
Yeah, we have the presentation as well, we can...
I'll give you the presentation, because that's the best you can watch and see.
Yeah, as far as we're concerned, we're council members.
Number one on the list is Broadmore, but then Broadlodge, down a few, Navaho, I don't think that's been touched on, either, the touch on the local, the bad ones, it's a high school.
And if you have any doubt, I would encourage all of you to go drive down Broadmore. And keep in mind, too, that when we do this, we try to group the roads together, because that also drives the cost down, so we may skip down one to get the grouping right, that are together, all your equipment's there.
Yeah, and geographically.
Because mobilization comes at a very, very high cost. If you look at the bid specs on those things, the mobilization's huge. But just specifically with this one, with Ledgeview, we got a, basically, a free replacement of the water lines from...
Cleveland Water, City of Cleveland.
And we tried to get an adjacent road, and they didn't approve it, so it's somewhat fortuitous to have that fixed and then pave over it.
Right, so I was just gonna ask you if you're gonna phase it that way.
So, the worst road on the list right now is Broadmore, and that's the number one on the list. That is a 60 value, and Ledgeview's a 75, so there are a whole group in between, but we look at, where are they at? Can we afford it? Because we don't want to be going all over the place if you cost room together. So, if you can get that for us, these gentlemen do not have it.
We can get it, sure.
Yeah, this was September. Questions or concerns about doing one, two, three? This is only going out for bid.
Right, right, right.
Then we have to come back and approve whatever the bid is. So, we're not approving the money, we're just giving...
That's all the more reason to do one, two, three, just to get a bid.
And this shows everything we did in that lobby, yeah, all that money is being spent on roads. And when we have our budget meeting, I will have Kevin give us, here's how much we have coming in, here's how much we've already allocated to debt for the roads that we've done, here's how much we have left, because I said that way, we're always certain that income is up here, debt's down here.
Are you bringing Kevin back for that?
Kevin, that Kevin, Kevin's basically...
Just calling John. It's very confusing, Jan, just calling John.
I actually figured it out. I'm usually not on top of it, but I thought that.
No, we're not bringing the other Kevin back.
I figured it out, really.
Okay.
Just asking.
Next up is number 10. I'm gonna go to the law department on this, about what Petros, and if you can explain where it is, because we didn't get a map or anything, but...
Well, I don't know if I can say exactly where it's at, but this is Phase Two of the Northwoods Development. I believe it's over, it's right by the church up at Valley View.
Thank God.
That's about as best a description I can give.
This is an expansion of the one that...
So, this is already up, this was, this was approved back in 2018 by planning, so we're a little bit late in the game with the approval by council, but this is just a statutory item for council to approve.
How many more houses?
Joe.
Do I know?
No.
Have they gone up the hill, or further behind the church?
I'd say there's in the 80s total. It goes up the hill.
And you know the issue we have with Phase One? We want to make sure we do not have that same issue with Phase Two.
Well, and we're actually in the process, at the December Planning Commission meeting, one of the things that Planning Commission approved was a development agreement essentially, to do a lot of screening that wasn't done when it was constructed, and I think that's gonna help a lot of the residents out, and they're gonna invest the substantial sum to do that, and I think it's gonna help correct a lot of issues.
Is there a way to put something either on the web or that? Because you know that development across the street...
Preserve.
...really got inundated with water and silt, and because it was not screened, whatever one, for lack of a better term, and...
Well, did they not also have the retention fund yet? They do. And so, when it happened? I don't know that they had the water retention, temporary retention measures in place. It's there now. Our engineer immediately got involved with the mayor's office and made sure that all got done as soon as we became aware of the issue. So, it got corrected as soon as we became aware of it.
The thing is, the homes that were impacted, we want to let them know that we're on tap of it, but this one, second of all, will their signs be installed, or are they gonna wait till the second phase is done?
I believe they're up. I don't know if you don't, Mayor, I believe they're in...
I went to the Planning Commission meeting, and I've dealt with this more than I care to admit, but the signs are up, and the other big piece that's not being said here that I'm adding from this point going forward, that we have not had in the past, is inspectors are gonna be on-site for the entire project. When it involves the right-of-way, storm sewers, sanitary, because before, we didn't have that, and we ran into tons and tons of problems, and the best part is, they pay for it, not us.
Right of the issues, they were not gonna put permanent signs up until the development was done. The residents came to me, and we had the inspector went out, "This stop sign must land on the ground." Someone had accidentally hit it, they didn't put it back up, in relation. Okay.
Private developments tend to get difficult like that, because the signs were their responsibility, and then in turn, they tried to say it was ours, and we're going, "Guys, it's a private development."
Right.
You know, people don't know where Yukon and Denali are, so where's your signs?
Recommendation on this?
There's no reason to hold it up from law perspective anyways.
Is there any other issues, sidewalks, light poles, anything else with this one?
So, the development agreement, the primary purpose was to resolve the lighting issue. We did a survey of the residents there, and I think every survey came back with the residents in favor of keeping the existing light poles, so the city's basically deferring to the people who are living there.
They're not going to the, that was the other thing, they said we won't put the signs up till we change the light poles.
And I, I, I remiss to tell you how much time that Mark and I have sat and talked about light poles. We're done with it, we've come to an agreement, I really don't want to labor that day.
And this landscaping that's going in, and the fancier street signs, and some other items, those are at the developer's cost as part of the negotiations the city had for leaving the existing lighting, so...
As long as their signs are going up, and we're inspecting, and we're not gonna send more water over to that other side, we don't have...
There's actually three big haunts on the, between the development and Valley View, so hopefully that helps.
Well, there's retention and detention, and they all play into that, so, that's a 100-year storm system, so that's, you can get much out of that.
I just don't want to hear from the church. We heard from the other side, I don't want the water now.
There's not gonna be water going in, oh, yeah, they'll move me, church will be down now.
So, Mr. Finley, this was another...
Yep.
And I don't think you have to amend the, so, but you'll be down one.
One, two, three, as well?
I just love doing that, they don't... Yep, one, two, three. Okay, then, next up is...
Spruce Hill.
This is the, is this Petros, no, Spruce Hill?
No, this is Spruce Hill, so this, if you'd like...
What would you, I defer to you.
So, this is a similar approval, although it's already been through council once. What happened initially, Planning Commission approved the PUD in an R1 district under our code, with the condition that they obtain a variance from the BZA for density, for, there's general density, the overall plan, how many houses are going in, and then you have a specific density, how many units per measurement square that the city uses. The BZA did not grant the variance, which resulted in an appeal to the Court of Common Police, which is currently pending, and I should know Mr. Vitale is out there, attorney and representative for CEV1 LLC. So, I don't want to comment on the specifics too much, because it's still pending litigation, but at the end of the day, Planning Commission, in December, I believe, voted to approve the conditional use without the requirement that they obtain a variance from the BZA, and now it's before you for approval of essentially the original plan that was submitted. As you will recall, there was an issue with waiving the sidewalk requirement last time, which I believe is why Mr. Vitale is here, so I'm sure he'll want to comment during a public comment for you, and our building commissioner made a recommendation how far to take the sidewalk up last time. So, right now, there's not a waiver of the sidewalk requirement in the legislation, just so you know.
So, my recommendation, as we do the first reading, put this out on the floor. And we had a lot of discussion about the sidewalk and the recommendation, and since it's in litigation, I don't personally think we could go further anyhow. You agree, Mark? One.
So, I think at this stage, we have everything worked out, except potentially the sidewalk issue. Everything else, we have an agreement.
Let's do it at one, so we can have the, get the sidewalk, because we did request...
And would you potentially, would we potentially amend it then, once the sidewalks worked out?
No.
No, you just go to two and three, then, I think.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we gotta get the sidewalk issue worked out. We could, you have to have a sidewalk, and all of a sudden, it's an issue again, so let's keep it at one.
What is the density for those, those homes? Is that less than a quarter acre than homes used to be?
No, at least, yeah, we're, we're only allowed two, two per acre, and then you can in a square, you can only have six, I believe, and so, how Brian kind of did it, there was like seven. Under, yeah, there's...
Sam's goofy.
Yeah, it was weird. So, it's going in, yeah, and I don't want to get too much into it, but that's under the conditional use standard through Planning Commission, there's a separate density standard that's a little bit higher through a rezoning under the code, but that's not what we're working on here, so, I'll say it.
Is this the development south of Ledge and north of Firestone?
Yeah.
Yeah. You set that up while I was...
That was quick.
I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it on the internet.
Always, yes, always good. So, if everyone agrees, we'll do first reading, that gives also any, not just the developer, but any resident that ever lives in this community, the ability, as well as the mayor, to continue issues and discussion.
South Freeway, make a ledge on the ledge, it's like right there.
It's the...
I love it, yours is.
Yeah.
It's the old modular property.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That's going up against the...
I'm taking it out, I'm sorry.
We look there. They're like, oh, am I up with our five minutes? Mr. Finley, make it up for one, first reading only.
Wrong choose.
Okay.
Do you want any of those things?
I hate when those things go off, I just do. I hate when that thing goes off. Nobody on, okay. Number 12.
Who's two and 11?
I prefer first. Ms. Grant, we're gonna have to do this, Mr. Mayor, could you explain number 12, which is, you're 11, 12 is the compensation for the non-city union, or non-union city, non-city union, geez.
So, I'll kind of wrap this together, because the 12 and 13 tie in, so essentially, when we hired the service supervisor, initially, the intent was to have that individual be hourly with overtime. After discussions internally, we decided that we wanted it to be salary. In order for that to happen, it was a grade nine originally, it has to go to a grade 10, there's no increase in pay, there's no difference in pay, but it takes it from a non-exempt to an exempt, and that's all this is. We're not changing pay, we're just cleaning it up to say it's a salaried employee, it has to be a grade 10, does not change anything. And that's it in a nutshell, unless, Mark, did I miss anything?
Nope, we got it.
Questions?
I'm not familiar with the pay grades, so it's just a question that might be just naive, is there a pay range difference between nine and 10?
Yeah, it does, it does have a different range.
But you're not changing?
But we're within it still. So, we're not changing, it's still, that's when we talked about, we realized, yeah, we're still good, we're, we intended to be...
So, the pay grade has been established, let's say pay grade 10, nine to 10 is established, we're not changing what's in the original, where the person fits in there.
Right, I got it.
And then, number 13 is, they go together because it's just cleaning up the language for that person that was hired, so Ms. Josephine, gather, we take both?
All right, three and both then.
Unless someone objects, we just need to clean up the language.
It's good and done.
So, it's agreed.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, the last ordinance, 13, that's just to amend the position description, because that was passed through council initially, so...
Okay, then we had a new one put on, the plate for tonight, to add Mr. Palado.
As the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals. We all have a grade.
You don't get a grade.
No, no, no.
We get a flat, we get a flat fee, yeah. So, Mayor, if you'd like to speak to this one, Mr. Garvis, I'm gonna make you do this one, because you have to do, add it to the agenda, waive the 48-hour rule, and then offer it, so...
Vinnie wanted to do it.
Well, you say it would have been Vinnie, but we're gonna let you try this time.
So, add to the agenda, what were the others?
Waive the 48-hour rule.
Ask, Vinnie will give you all the language.
No, don't be bold.
First, you gotta add it, then you gotta waive it, then you gotta offer it.
So, we had this in in time, but we missed it somewhere along the lines, it got, it got lost, so, I mean, we were sitting at our staff meeting one day, and I went, "Well, where's the appointment?" I did post these online, these are all generally the appointment of the mayor to put onto these boards and commissions. He did contact me and express interest, actually, in both planning and the BZA. He was the only one left that, you know, after a month has passed, we've been short a person, and I feel he'd be a good fit for that, so I'm making my recommendation to put him on there now.
Questions?
For those that don't know, he's been involved in the city in different areas in the past.
I know him very well.
Name is really familiar.
And actually, he assumed Jan's role when she resigned years ago, and I think it was for two years, I believe, correct?
Oh, come on.
So, he was here for a while in a council capacity as well.
But he also ran the sausage store.
He did win for a lot of stuff. So, Mr. Garvis, before I forget, are you comfortable with all those?
I am, I have to ask, I have to ask Josephine for the cheat sheet, actually, of all the things I brought.
Mark will write it out for you real quick, if Vinnie doesn't have his with him, or she does have that cheat sheet.
What am I amending in number eight?
Be a motion to amend the ordinance to be consistent with the copy distributed tonight. Be a motion to amend the ordinance to be consistent with the copy distributed tonight.
And there is no issue if you read it?
Quite, yeah.
I mean, nobody's going to say, no, no, it's, it's better to read it the first time, it's too, better than not, because.
You don't want to get it wrong.
And then Mark will do the stare if you do.
He'll just correct me.
He does not have a gavel though, okay. Anybody have, is there anything else for the agenda? I think we've gone through them all, we're up to thirteen, wow.
We've read a lot in here.
Okay, if nothing else, first off, we'll tackle the Board of Zoning Appeals. Everyone received a copy of the letter that they've been paid five dollars since nineteen eighty-six. And they're requesting that, is there a way to increase that their proposal is go to twenty-five per meeting? The Board of Zoning Appeals, what's the average times a year that they meet?
Once a month.
The third Wednesday in the morning.
They meet every month?
Unless there's nothing on the agenda.
So it's once a month or less?
So.
Or then some months, they might have to call a meeting, right?
Well, let's say they met every month, so you do the math, four times, what?
Four times twenty, times twelve, it's like nine hundred and sixty dollars a year extra, if they have twelve meetings a year, so I think we can.
Versus the minimal wage. Well, actually, we weren't paying a minimal wage, minimal wage is.
We're paying minimal, not minimum wage, but minimal.
Hello, minimal.
Okay, I have a question on that, Madam President. Why do we not pay, like the Planning Commission, but we pay the B Z A, we don't pay Civil Service Commission? There's no compensation for any of those commissions except the B Z A.
Mark, do you know the history of that?
No history.
I don't.
That's before my time, eighty-six.
Should we at some point in time consider?
That is purely a council decision.
Well, how about we hold this one and don't take action? Because you bring up a very valid point. We don't pay the board, Parks and Rec.
In the letter.
Pay the Planning Commission, we don't pay the Civil Service Commission.
Yeah, but, I mean, the piece that they put in from the newspaper in their letter mentions that they are, that they, in Pittsburgh, they pay everyone.
Right.
But I think.
Except for the Gulf Advisory Board.
Why don't we hold that, that's a good point. And let's talk about it, what we need to do is, Mayor, why don't you think about what would be a right amount of pay? And then Mr. Ferris can talk about what that impact is to us. It may sound minimal, but at the same time, it's forever, so, yeah.
Well, they, they sent me this letter, and obviously, I forwarded it to the President to discuss with you guys. I mean, I have some feelings on it, but I wanted you guys to kind of debate this one out, because it doesn't make sense to me that one board gets paid.
Right.
And, and no one else does. So are you opening Pandora's box here?
Yes.
Because if we start to pay one per meeting, then we get to pay every board? Because I mean, generally, this has been a volunteer thing, I mean, there's not compensation for these things, and I can look at this both ways. I get it, it's your time, it's your effort, but I've been a part of many committees and boards where I get nothing, and I was okay with that, so which, which way do you go? Is it such?
The boards are not on a never pay.
They made an interesting point that I saw in either the letter or the email, that unlike other, other boards, they actually travel to the homes of residents to look at things that are under appeal. And that that's, I think that was the more.
Yeah, that is what stood out to me as like the only difference, so that, that could be justifiable.
When I was on the Parks and Rec board, I traveled to different parks, we were looking at different things, because we were putting together the rec center.
I mean.
I did go by this.
Yes.
Yeah.
But that's, that's what I saw.
Not necessary though.
But when you, now when, when this comes up and this becomes more public than it is at this particular time, are we going to get a backlash? Because we have newer people being involved in these commissions. And as we've all vacated them, Dave's vacated a position, I've vacated a position, Jessica's vacated a position and moved, you know, on up the ladder also. So here you got younger people, newer people, and they see this change that we're going to be making, that's going to be very public. And I agree with Jan that this is something we should put a hold on until we have a better chance to digest this.
And actually, what you're doing too is, if we decide to pay them, we're going to have to pay them through payroll.
How are you paying them now? Paying cash?
Probably just, I don't know, to be honest with you, it's five dollars, I don't think I've been concerned about it.
Per meeting, I think, right?
Yeah.
So how about we do this?
I'm guessing it's just the, you know, payables check for five.
Mayor, if you and Jan work together, what are all the committees that we have people who volunteer? Number one, how many are on those committees? If we went to twenty-five for every committee, what's the financial impact? And how much more work, or any additional that it puts on the finance department? Or the traditional pay, don't pay taxes?
Well, yeah, and O P E R S has a role, if it's, if it's per meeting, it's social security. It's not O P E R S, and if it's per month, it's O P E R S.
I, I tend to look at this from the public's perspective, and again, I think we're opening up Pandora's box here. I would tend to think we just leave things the way they are. I really feel we're, you know, with everything we've gone through in the past, and you and I have had many conversations and differences of opinion, you know, with the levies and things like that that we've gone through, but to add this in now, I think it sends the wrong message to the public.
But I think it's fair to say, because we don't have a yes or a no. That would tell us yes or no. I did P T A forever, how much did I get paid? Zip, I did it because I wanted to do it.
The unintended consequences is always what we're into, because I'm sitting here thinking now about his staff and having to cut more checks, and we don't even cut checks anymore, and then we have.
And you also have to be sure.
And that's why I asked Mr. Ferris, what's the impact on the finance department if we go this route?
It's probably nominal, but it's.
Why don't you send it up?
But it's still additional work, and we're trying to use the city funds.
And then they also have to coordinate with the people that, like, so Parks and Rec Department, or the Parks and Rec Committee, the chairperson would have to take a role and, you know, make sure they know who's there every month, because I assume you only get paid when you're, when you show up, and we have a problem with people not showing up, so then you have to submit a list.
If it's per meeting, you're right, if it's per month, then.
Yeah, I, I would, if we're going to do it, I suggest the per meeting.
Yeah, that would be so, yeah, because it gives people incentive to actually show up.
You know, it would, it would be, it would, not only be a positive, be a positive thing, but most of those people are already in social security, they're not in O P E R S, which would benefit them more instead of trying to figure out a separate O P E R S account at the end of the year or upon retirement. So I think that would be the avenue to go.
So why don't we gather more information of impacts on both sides? Because under the chapter that they quote, compensation shall be determined by council. We can make it zero, or we can leave it at five, or we can increase it.
And it doesn't have to be the twenty-five, it can be twenty.
It doesn't have to be twenty-five either, it could be ten, like, hey, you get four gallons of gas.
Like all the other stuff, yeah, gas mileage, oh yeah, let's add that to.
Well, since you got.
She's using that as a, how you could base it.
The government says that.
Do you think we don't have the gas mileage, oh my god.
But maybe, you know, compromise, make it twenty dollars.
Did you have a question?
I had an additional point.
They can double.
When I saw that email spread come through, and I read the ordinance that they quoted, I actually had a thought, and I asked Mark, and I don't know if anything's changed or not, but since they're all pointed to a term, anything we would do would take effect until the end of their term.
Yeah, I did verify that.
So it would be years before that would even actually kick in.
That's a good one too, so add that to.
Yeah, there's basically no rush on making that decision. If, if I had to speculate as to why they're, they were singled out for the five dollars, probably because the B Z A is a quasi judicial body, it's a little bit different than the other boards and commissions. But that would be the only basis I could think of.
Would civil service be a quasi?
How about the Planning Commission?
They have a peer review authority, so.
Sure they do.
Planning Commission is not treated as a quasi judicial body.
You know, anybody that's in a union, if they have any disciplinary action or dismissal, they revert back to civil service, they're working. You know, and that's the one that needs the least amount out of every commission and every board.
Parks and Rec will get ten.
But I mean, to get to the point of, of them traveling to homes, I mean, I know Pat always does it, but occasionally, we will actually visit the site that something's going to be put on, just so that we can check what's around it.
That's your normal, anyhow, investigation.
Right, yeah, we do it too.
That's what we do with the parks, we're talking about the real stuff, so what do you do? You go see how.
And I don't know if the point they were making there was the travel time, or if it was the additional hours invested in what they're doing, I don't, I couldn't say.
I think it was the gas, the mileage. So we'll hold this discussion, we won't take any action tonight. And we'll wait for some additional information from the administration and Mark. Okay, the other thing is, if we can move on. Clerk of Council, I have had, the ad was placed. You have it, Jessica worked to make sure that the ad, we, first of all, we, Josephine, Jessica and I did to have an ad created and developed. We had Mark approve it, so that we didn't overstep any legal boundaries. That then has been provided to, and I didn't get my newsletter.
It's in there.
Is it?
It is in there.
I didn't get my newsletter.
He's going to have to deliver it, man.
I usually get it Tuesdays, I don't.
Other end.
It could still be sitting there for all I know.
But come to this now.
It also was put out electronic, I click.
Right, so it's on the, they went to Cleveland dot com, I think either last Thursday or Friday, and it's on the website, on the council page, there's a link, and on the front page, there's a link to job listings. And then from there, there's a link to that job listing along with others. And then it was on the newsletter, and they put a link to all the job openings on the city page, Facebook page yesterday, and probably Twitter. And then on the, the city community group on Facebook, we put a direct link to it, so it's out there. We decided we didn't want to go indeed or anything bigger than regional, because we're just not looking for anyone outside of the area.
And so far, as of today, I have three applicants already supplied. I've already advised all three that we will be interviewing this first, no, the second and third week of February, that they'll be contacted for an interview, so that they're aware, yes, we did receive their application, yes, we're going to interview. Like this, we just interview everybody, you know, at this point, we haven't any way to, we didn't streamline, there's no reason to, because you don't know who's coming and who's going to come in at that. So we are moving forward with it, the intent again, hire by the end of February, they have a whole month with Josephine. Josephine has talked to us about the fact that she would be willing to take a phone call now and then from the person if they have questions. I also talked to civil service, because Josephine is their secretary at this point in time. And they would like to see that we mention that and retain that person, they have no intent of finding somebody else, they would like to stay with the clerk of council. And they will still be very much conscious of working within that person's schedule, that they're not going to look for, you know, dates and times that are.
All locations.
Yeah, or, you know, maybe. So we will put that also as part of the discussion point, that they will, civil service depends on the year. They had a real busy time, and then all of a sudden, they'll, you know, they fill the jobs, they have one coming up. And then it'll be, it could be quiet again for another year or two, who knows, so.
They're mandatory meetings once a year in January.
Yeah, but other than that, the rest of it?
Hasn't need.
And what are we doing about the interviews? One, how are we going to handle the questions that we're going to ask? Because when we did the, you know, the council interviews, we each had our own question.
Right, and that's the same thing.
Or no, you came up with questions.
No, she came up with all the questions.
You gave her questions and distributed.
Right, and you asked us not to vary from that, because you wanted all the same questions being asked.
Of the same, all the same questions asked of every, we don't want to vary, so one gets.
Yeah, because I had one for a certain person.
Didn't you ask us to submit to you suggested questions, and then you compiled?
You guys came to me, but I collected all the questions and then I put them together. And then, just like we did with the council interviews, what we'll do is we'll go around the table, let everybody ask a question, shouldn't the President of Council ask all the questions? I've also, we notified Josephine, we'd like her to be in the interview with us, because she, you know, give us her sense of feeling of.
Yeah, with the tentative names.
So we're thinking the twelfth, the eighteenth?
Well, the fifteenth.
Yeah, Saturday, the fifteenth, we thought.
And the eighteenth. We talked about the fourteenth and realized that is Valentine's Day, and there might be something more important for everyone to do.
Maybe.
Not at my house, but.
Not at my house either.
We would never do anything on a Friday, why would we?
That's why the big hearts up there. We did sat, we did talk Saturday for the fact that these people may have jobs, and it'd be easier for them to interview on a Saturday. Depending on how many we have, we cut down the eighteenth, because the seventeenth is President's Day, so city halls closed.
Does anyone have any problems with those dates, the twelfth, the fifteenth, and the eighteenth?
I don't, you actually, I happen to be traveling two weeks in that month, and that worked out perfect.
All right.
I would like, I would like to mention something to you as a group, just in case, but if you could have a three-minute executive session somewhere along the line, it's a personal thing, so you are aware.
Talk to Mark, real quick, to see if it's one that we can do.
Pardon me? You're asking for one tonight?
You want it tonight?
Well, ju- just so I, you already know what I want to bring up.
Yeah, talk to me, talk to me.
Go talk to, the reason being is, the executive session is very specific of what it can be used for. And we've got to be very careful that it's.
Would you call that a personnel matter?
Let's.
Go talk to him first. If for some reason, he says yes, just tell me over up there, and then you can.
Just initiate it.
Do you want, I don't mean to, you want to bring up again vacation, so that it gets all ironed out? Or is that premature?
No.
Because I think it should be ironed out, and then you have a spastic ass to do.
I mean, my, I mean, we were looking at what, I was just curious, and I asked if there was a historical trend of which meetings we cancel in the summer months? It just kind of is random.
June, July, and August.
Yeah.
We go to one meeting a month. We try to make it that we cancel, is it the last of June and the first of July, isn't it? So that we have, you have like a.
The last of June, okay.
It's either.
Because of the fourth of July.
So in terms of your, in terms of your spouse, you're having to give us a six months notice, what would be convenient for you so that they can work on those dates, is the point?
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, just tell us. Or, yeah, tell us what.
We're pretty flexible, especially in the summertime.
My, my personal vacation schedule is, at work, I can just, I could ask for tomorrow night, but my wife works in a hospital environment. So when it's her turn seniority wise, she gets to pick a week, and she's, it's kind of like a, a draft, she's on the clock. So, and she was just asking, what weeks can I or can't I pick in July and August?
Yeah, if she could let us know which week she can take.
Then we would try to move, I also don't want to.
Especially in July, because we only go to one meeting, so.
And isn't the idea to give us the larger gap for the apartment house?
So we'll leave, we'll either take the second in July and the first in August, or the second in June and the first in July.
That way, everybody gets.
So there'll, there'll be one full.
You get a full month away.
So the other, just on that same topic and, and thought process, what if one of us ever ends up not being able to make a meeting? How do you guys typically handle that? Do you just?
You get held upside down.
Notify, yeah, notify me right away. We have to, yeah. We have to have a quorum.
Right.
So for some reason, somebody else already knew they were going to be off. Then we may have to change the meeting, we can always call a special meeting, but we have to do that with at least forty-eight hours advance notification to.
The other thing is, always let the clerk's office know that when you're unavailable, out of town, whatever.
Gotcha, just so you know.
And Josephine always needs to know, the clerk of council always needs to know, even if it's not a council meeting, if you're gone for a week, because then she'll make sure, anything that may be hot off the press, and she wants to make sure you know about it, she lets you know about it.
Well, if they call a special and I know someone's not around.
And you know.
They, they don't have a quorum, I mean, it's not like.
They only need four for a quorum, right?
You need four for a quorum. No, you need three for a quorum, right?
I'm sorry.
Four for super majority, no.
Yeah, we're down to three.
Okay, you need four for special. I'll get you the.
That work, yeah. And everybody just, you know, we're very flexible, because we do have lives.
Yeah, well, I just thought that it was something that was done the same way every year after year, and that's why I was asking.
You just have to give up your paycheck.
I don't care with that.
And then we get to take dinner sometimes, that's all, we're real flexible.
Casing around those times.
Anything else? That anybody else had?